Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of January 15th, 2013 of the Stillwater Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is land use actions for discussion and possible action. Item A, Daniel Bullock and Jenny Ladd, specific use permit, PZ .12 .1713, requesting review and approval to allow pet care, animal keeping, and veterinary services at property addressed as 116 West 10th Avenue in the CB-BI bid district number one, Commercial Business with Business Improvement District number one, overlay district. And it looks like this was tabled from our January 8th, 2013 meeting. And according to this, the applicant has withdrawn their request for this. So I think we'll need to have a motion, second, and vote to dismiss this item from the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second. Please place your votes when flashing.
We'll have to take a verbal roll call. I didn't set it up, so.
Okay. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes. I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Teague is absent. Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Merrifield?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Marler?
Yes.
Motion to dismiss is approved.
Motion dismissed is approved. Okay, we'll move on to item B. Park Seven Group, Paul Levine, map amendment, PZ .12 .1717, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed as 799 East Mercury Avenue from IG Industrial General to RTM Residential Two Family and Multi Family District. Tom?
Okay. This property is 799 East Mercury Avenue. It's located approximately at the corner of Mercury Avenue and Marine Road, which is kind of off of Perkins. You can see Perkins to the west, and then Lakeview to the south is the general location. The property is stated it's currently zoned IG, which is Industrial General. To the north, it's surrounded by property which is zoned RTM, Residential Two Family and Multi Family. The east, some IG Industrial General. The south, some RTM, which is Residential Two Family and Multi Family, and a portion of CS, which is Commercial Shopping District. And to the west again is the CG, General Commercial District or Commercial General. It's an air photo of the property. You'll see that the property currently is basically vacant, has been used for a number of years for a temporary concrete crushing type use. To the north, although the air photo, this air photo is from February, it shows just a vacant field right now. If you drove out there, you'd see people feverishly at work doing a lot of road or land grading and whatnot in preparation for the Aspen Heights development. To the east, see there's a lot of vacant ground and some industrial property. To the south, it's mostly single-family uses and vacant commercial property. And to the west, it's a commercial uses. Staff findings include the proposed RTM Residential Two Family and Multi Family zoning is inconsistent with the future land use of Industrial General. However, if you go back to the zoning map, you'll notice that recently the Aspen Heights development was approved, re-zoned just north of this property in question. It is surrounded by other similar zoning. The property to the south is zone similar. It is a different use, definitely. There is service commercial uses in the area to support industrial, multi-family type uses. And staff finding number two, the proposed zoning would allow for multi-family development opportunities. Finding number three, other underutilized industrial tracts with a potential for development do exist in the city. And find number four, the request will remove vacant industrial property from future, from the possibility of future industrial development. With that, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for?
Maybe one quick one, Tom. If this got approved and was rezoned, do you kind of have a ballpark idea of how much other industrial acreages would still be around that area that could be utilized? I mean, it's not.
Ballpark, I would say around 80 to 100 acres within a mile.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Before I open up the public hearing, just to let everyone know how this is going to work, when we do open up the public hearing, I'll ask for anyone who would like to come up and speak in favor of this map amendment. Everyone that wants to speak in favor will get a chance. Once the in-favor folks are done, then I'll ask for anyone who would like to speak in opposition to come up. And I'd like for anyone that comes up to please state their name and address for our record. And once the public hearing, once everyone's spoken, while I close the public hearing, we'll have alternatives from staff and then discussion among the commission and then vote. So that's kind of the way it works. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment to please come forward. Would anyone like to speak in favor?
My name is Paul Levine. I reside.
You with the microphone?
Yeah.
At home, there you go.
Is that better?
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Paul Levine. I'm with Park Seven Group. And my address is 25 Twin Walls Lane, Weston, Connecticut. And I just wanted to come up here tonight to let you know a little bit about our company. We are a national multi-family developer. We've developed about 7,000 units in 13 states around the country. And what we're proposing at this location would be a multi-family apartment and townhome development of about 275 units, highly amenitized, 10,000 square foot clubhouse with a fitness center, swimming pool, basketball, heavily amenitized. And again, I'm here just to answer any questions that you all might have.
Any questions for Mr. Levine? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the map amendment?
Name's Dr. Ross Harper. The address is 1108 Emma Lane of Stillwater, Oklahoma. I am the president of the Lakeview Ridge Homeowners Association, and I stand here with some other homeowners within that subdivision as well. Most of them have properties on Lauren Lane itself, which as you'll see from the map, is the street directly south of the zone that we're looking, or that we're discussing here today. As the homeowners, as Lakeview Ridge, we do have an objection to this rezoning. We have some concerns regarding the development of another student apartment lot so close to our existing properties. Obviously, there's already the Aspen Heights development on the north side of Mercury Drive. That's about 750 bedrooms, we believe, so that's 750 additional persons within our immediate vicinity, traffic, infrastructure, and so forth. We now hear another 275 units plus clubhouse, pool, basketball courts, et cetera, near us. We are concerned about not just the traffic and infrastructure, but also just the general loss of property values that we will see from having a student condo facility built so close to our properties. We are concerned that these will be built right on our existing property lines. These are not single-story buildings, so there will be a height elevation, so the loss of privacy for the houses on the north of Lauren Lane. And there will be noise in evenings and weekends that we currently do not see, particularly with the installation of clubhouses, pools, and basketball courts. There are no sidewalks. We have local children in the streets. Obviously, we have our streets of Lauren Lane and Emma Lane, but within that, the local children do play on Marine as well as they loop around and form a loop within our own subdivision. So again, we are concerned that we're going to lose privacy, that we're going to lose property values, and as such, we'd request that you do not approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harper. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak in opposition to the map amendment? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Gina Noble, 906 East Lauren Lane. I am opposed for the reasons just stated by Dr. Harper. My backyard is quite close to the development, and I'm also concerned about water. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned that this area is skyline schools. It's a mess to try to get across the street in the morning or in the afternoon across Lakeview, and this is, people are going to cut through from Marine to Lakeview. So I would, I hope there's a traffic study or something. We are not equipped for that. And anyway, thank you. I oppose.
Thank you, Ms. Noble.
My name is Dr. Bridget Miller, and I'm on faculty at Oklahoma State University. I live right next door to Gina at 910 Lauren Lane, so my backyard would back up to this new development. And I have really strong concerns about my privacy with apartments being able to look into my backyard, into my house. I'm also an avid runner and cyclist and regularly run and bike on these streets, Lauren, Lakeview, Marine, Perkins, and it's already quite dangerous in the morning when I'm trying to run and get out of the neighborhood and up Marine and get to airport. To run along Lakeview is also very unsafe. There aren't sidewalks. And I'm extremely concerned about the additional cars, additional students. And actually, up until we got this letter, was unaware that there was a 750-unit complex going in north of Mercury, and I'm quite concerned about that with the added traffic. And with something going in practically over my back fence, it just concerns me even more. And so I would like to put my name on the record as being strongly opposed to this new development.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
My name's Jason Shepherd. I live at 918 Lauren Lane. I am as well opposed to this complex going in. It is directly over my back fence. Like the others, it's stated very well, and Ross made a good point about the security, the added traffic. If you all ever frequent the area on the south side of our neighborhood where Lakeview meets Benjamin, the traffic flow in that area, especially in the mornings before school and right after school, is absolutely atrocious in that area. This would definitely add more traffic through that area. And the security, I have a young daughter, you know, there, it's just kind of a very poor placement, I believe, for apartment complexes of that size to be placed in that area, because it is kind of a quiet area as it sits. We're not even sure what the situation with the traffic and the infrastructure is going to be with these other apartments that are going in north that are currently being built. And it feels like everything's kind of being crammed in at a very rapid pace of time to approve that in such a manner.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Hi. My name's Dr. Brian Frainer. I live at 1212 Emma Lane, just one street south of Lauren. You know, I've lived there for just about seven years, and I was the original owner of my house. In fact, I bought it from your colleague, your colleague's parents, Becky Teague. The number one criterion that I listed when I was looking for a house moving to Stillwater is I said, I don't want to live near the campus because I don't want to live in a dense student-based population. And they assured me that this would be a neighborhood where that would be the case. And it has been the case up until now, but that's all changing. That's all changing. I also, I'm a past president of the Homeowners Association. I've worked with all these folks. We've worked very hard to try to maintain the neighborhood, you know? It is, it's been a hard job, because while it appears to be single-family residences, you know, there are increasingly within our neighborhood rentals. And the, this means that we have to fight a lot of battles continually. So there is, I wouldn't even say 50% student housing, but we already have significant student housing within that neighborhood. That means there's added traffic on the streets. These streets are pretty narrow. There's at least three students per house. When boyfriends or girlfriends come over, three cars turns into six cars, and you have to navigate up and down these streets to get home at night. Lots of parties in the past, lots of parties in the past, and I've, you know, called the cops plenty of times to try and keep the parties down. People driving through lawns, knocking over mailboxes. You know, this is not what I bought a house to live around. And so with the addition of now a second apartment complex in the nearby area, it's going to worsen the neighborhood significantly. There's been at least two instances where somebody, I assume intoxicated, was doing donuts at the intersection there at Marine and Emma Lane. There's kids up and down the streets, and this is, this is just not something I signed up for. I think it's, you know, it's going to diminish the character of the neighborhood. There are professional people who've invested in this neighborhood for a reason, and we're just asking that you preserve the character of the neighborhood that we signed up and paid to live in. So I would vote in opposition of this measure if I had a vote, and I'd appreciate you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frainer. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the map amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives, please.
Before I get into that, I just wanted to ask if you had any questions for me?
I do have some questions for you.
Okay.
If we approve this zoning, how close can these apartments be to the fence line? Number one. Number two, and so you can look, kind of look up the question at the same time, is how many stories can this apartment complex be?
Okay. The requested zoning is to the RTM, which is Two Family and Multi Family District. It, just to answer all your questions, maybe ones you didn't even think of.
Good, good.
In the RTM District, the permitted uses include boarding and rooming houses, churches and religious institutions, multi-family with a maximum gross density of 20 units per acre, townhomes, and two-family duplexes. With the specific use permit, it would allow for child and adult care services, conventional single-family, and educational institutions. The maximum height of a structure is 35 feet, so in theory, I suppose one could have three stories with a very slight pitch up to the roof. The setbacks are 20 feet on the front. That would be any, any abutting a road right of way. Probably, they're going to not subdivide this property, so the front would probably be along Mercury and Marine. The side would be five feet, and the rear would be 20 feet. I would, if it's all just one lot, I think that the, that backside along those residential, that residential area would actually be five feet. We'd have to, I don't know what the applicant is planning or proposing when they come in. It is also, it does increase the, the setback does increase three feet for each additional story above the first.
That's what I was saying, each additional story adds setbacks to it. Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Two stories would be eight foot, and three stories would be 11 foot.
Yes.
I have a question, Tom. In industrial light, assuming we do not approve this zoning, what are the?
Yes. Just a moment. Industrial, yeah, it's Industrial General right now.
General, excuse me. Tom already knew what your question was.
He was already looking it up. Oh, yeah.
I didn't bring my reading glasses.
Industrial General District does allow for many uses. They include animal and pet keeping facilities, construction-type operations, which would have been the crushing that was happening, machinery part manufacturing, paper manufacturing, parking lots, plastics and rubber products manufacturing, primary metal and fabricated metal products manufacturing, public administration and service, research and development, telecommunications towers, transportation activities, which would be like, it includes like a tow truck yard or lots of other things. Transportation and equipment manufacturing, utilities, which should be, could be a power plant, warehousing and storage, waste management and remediation services, and wood product manufacturing. It does allow for even more heavy uses with specific use permits. Those are the list of uses that could come in right now.
Setback.
Setbacks.
Setbacks. The current rear setback with being abutting a residential district behind them would be 75 feet for a rear. What I needed to know was the side, also 75 feet.
That's what I thought.
I'm kind of confused. The developer can state Marine as the front or Mercury as?
Front is any property line that abuts a road right of way, so that's not designated by the developer. And so if you have two fronts, you have two sides.
I'm sorry, Tom. Did you state what was the maximum height currently allowed?
Currently, I didn't, there isn't one in the industrial district.
Could be whatever.
Yeah.
Do we have a traffic survey for there in front of the school on Lakeview? Has that been done? Is that?
There's probably traffic counts been done.
I was going to ask, I know, because I, one of the people mentioned concerns about water. When they come forward with a development plan, they will have to turn in a water impact analysis and a sewer impact analysis.
Yes.
I don't know, is a traffic impact analysis required with this?
This project would be big enough to require a traffic impact analysis, and also they would also have to go.
I'm just curious, the one that's already got a permit across the street, the Aspen Heights.
Yes.
I assume they had to turn in a traffic impact analysis.
Yes.
So based on their development that's currently going on, are there, are they going to have to make any improvements to Mercury Avenue, I guess, or the other, Marine?
It's certainly possible, because now they'll have to account for that traffic and when they come in.
Okay.
In their analysis. So it certainly is possible, the Aspen Heights.
If you're not aware of any, any things that are, that they're having to do at this time to Mercury Avenue?
Yeah, Aspen Heights, their traffic impact analysis didn't specifically require much to be done, but Aspen Heights is doing some changes to the signal at Mercury and Perkins. They're adding dual left-turn lanes, just changes to the signal, not adding any actual lanes onto the road. And they changed the way their entrance is. Their entrance is essentially where the, where the road goes from the four lane to two lane. So where most of the traffic will be going is on the four lane part, based on the traffic analysis that they did.
Would a level seven traffic analysis have to include the previous changes or the previous traffic analysis of the addition of Aspen Heights, the additional units there, and how they will affect, how they'll affect traffic? Does the level seven have to account for that whenever they do a traffic impact analysis?
I can't speak to that 100%. I would think that, because I'm not the person who reviews that, but the, when it is submitted for review, staff, the transportation staff, comment on it, and I would imagine that they would make sure that that's included, because that's pretty important.
Any other questions? Good. Tom. Okay, go ahead with your alternatives, if you would.
Okay. Alternatives, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, or we can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. And that is it.
Thank you, Tom.
Sure.
Discussion, Commissioner?
I'm personally concerned about the setback and being only five foot. If we rezonate, then as I understand it, they have that by right, and even the developer gets up and says, I'll make it 60 foot, we have no way except through a PUD process to do that. The drainage study and the water and sewer study, I'm confident the city's going to handle all of that real well. Sort of concerned, getting concerned about all the traffic and the traffic up there, and even after a traffic study, you know, it's, I'm concerned about that versus industrial zoning. But my major concern is the setback and the effect if we rezonate that the developer have by right to put that in there.
Well, and, you know, I hear the concerns of the neighborhood. This is a down zoning. I mean, this is a less obtrusive zoning than what is currently zoned. It's also the same zoning as your neighborhood currently. And so in that respect, you know, I think from a purity zoning standpoint, that, you know, it's going to be, not saying it's a lesser impact necessarily, but potentially it could be a lesser impact than an IG, what could go in an IG zoning. You know, typically, you like to transition from residential zoning to industrial especially. Normally, you go through commercial, then industrial zoning. So, you know, we have a pretty big step already setting there between residential and heavy industrial, without much of a buffer in between. Again, I know it's a challenge in Stillwater. We're going through a, kind of a building boom on apartments, and we do that here about every 25 years. It's tough to find a spot in Stillwater that one, has the infrastructure, which the east and northeast seem to be the most underutilized infrastructure we have right now in the city. Again, we have, you know, signalization, stoplight, four lane, onto a four lane, you know? Not to say that people won't cut around. I understand what you folks' concern as well. But, you know, from a purity planning standpoint, it's a down zone. So that's my two cents. I look at it and agree with what you said, Chairman, but I think that the, possibly when Aspen Heights was coming in, they looked at this as a, you know, a buffer zone of, what's the best way to explain myself? Maybe Aspen Heights looked at this as the commercial zone between them and residential. And I, I've got a feel for the residents, knowing the size of their backyards at a five-foot setback, having something of this scale at a five-foot setback is extremely intrusive. Other comments?
I would probably mirror a lot what you're saying. I just, I feel like it is a down zoning. I know it's not, I don't want to sound like I'm not taking the concerns of homeowners into effect, but what could potentially be there under the existing zoning could be far more detrimental, I would think, than what you're currently zoned. And you're currently zoned RTM, and it would be RTM, obviously, of a different use. But again, like Mike said, the traffic is always a concern. The traffic's always a concern in Stillwater. You wouldn't believe, everything we hear, everything has a traffic impact to it. And I don't want to take that lightly, but I feel where it's at, Mercury Drive would probably be the initial impact put out onto Perkins would be the majority of where the traffic would flow. Obviously, the traffic study would tell us that. But you'd kind of have to mirror a lot of the, I figure it would be a step down zoning.
Other comments?
I don't know, Dusty. I wonder if, if there is a proper period of time that needs to pass when Aspen comes in so that we, we don't create a bigger than, in other words, things can transition a little bit more. I haven't had time to fully, I delivered some furniture up to Lauren Lane here earlier this week to a homeowner there that was, it wasn't your typical house with kids family. And I would like to kind of get, maybe talk to some of the neighbors, see how many families, children versus is already in this current situation. It's, and, and, you know, we've worked hard to try to keep this whole It's, and, and, you know, we've worked hard to try to keep this whole town from becoming a transitional thing as we've gone through this glut that's hitting us. But I'm not certain, I don't feel like I personally would like to do a little bit more look around there. I've got a lot of questions that might not be fully geared to where we can run them tonight, but, but as far as what's been going on out there noise-wise, machinery-wise on that construction site or whatever. And I can see in respect of this neighbor that says that, you know, I, they don't fear the industrial general as much as they fear college kids. That's an amazing statement. But in our town, I get it. I understand what they're saying and, and they're, but I do know this isn't fully our decision through the, the whole system. But I do have concerns with the by-right concept that we could be unleashing. And maybe, I'm not certain I would be more in favor of a slowdown in this. And I'm the capitalist pig in this group. I, I get it. I know that people have the right in America to do with their land if they have that right to do so. But I do understand that we do need to protect residents who make investments of property with intentions and expectations. So I'm pretty tossed on this one, I guess I would say. I don't know, but I don't know if there is a hurry. And that is my thought process. Maybe we need to look at the situation. One thing that comes up to mind is the sidewalk issue and some of these other issues, because there is gonna be a lot permeating in this direction from Aspen, let alone this other thing. And I was a college kid. I know what all comes in with all of that. But this is a tough one for me. It really is. As, you know, like you said, I came here tonight thinking this is a no-brainer. We're zoning down. I can't fathom why someone would be upset about that. It, it sounded like we would be doing something in great favor for once. We don't get to do that very often. But for that reason, I don't know. I'm not prepared to word this into a motion or anything, but I'm not comfortable, I guess, moving forward personally with the PUD until I get to, to see and evaluate some more things. And I don't know what the hurry is. Maybe there is a reason. If y'all would, you guys, more tenured on the board and more tenured in the building community, I would, I would love to hear your input back in that scenario. Because as a capitalist, I don't want to deter, you know, I want this to be a, a business-friendly city. We, we don't want to be difficult for people to invest their money here.
Well, and, and it's a very good point. And, you know, if, obviously, you're sure time is of anyone's essence if it, if they made the application and went to that trouble. Now, if you or the board feels that, that more time's needed to study this, that's sure an option you can throw out there, Joe, if you'd like.
That is my feelings on it. I think that explains to you how I prefer, would prefer to proceed. And I, and I, and I, like I said, I thought this was going to be a, a perfect transitional thing. It, it seems harmless, but I put myself in, in the position of these homeowners and, and in their situations. And I put myself in the position of these builders, right-wise, you know. But, but I can understand the argument. And I think it's a very rational argument that I would fear industrial general in Stillwater, Oklahoma, less than I would fear Sigma Delta Nu or what?
Strike that from the record.
Yeah. Levity there.
Any other discussion?
I, I just wanted to say one thing. I, I'm pretty new on this board as well. But to clarify for the people that are here this evening, we're just a recommending body. So whether this is, whether we vote yea or nay on this, really, it's just the city council ultimately decides what the zoning becomes. And I, you know, I just wanted to make sure they knew that.
That's, that's a very good point. Thank you, David. It's very true. We, we only, we're only a recommending board to the city council. The ultimate decision is, is theirs, obviously.
I think the only thing I'd like to say to Joe and not to, to take away from it, 'cause if, I mean, if you need more time to think about it or talk to people, that, I mean, that's, I think, not a bad idea. I don't wanna, the thing I don't wanna do is kinda pull them out there where they don't have a decision yes or no. It's a project that timeframe or anything like that. I don't think we'll know the impact of Aspen Heights for years, you know. So I think that would be a hard thing to put an impact on. But, I mean, individually, you want more time to talk to homeowners or anything? I think, I think everyone's kinda always concerned at first. I mean, I would love to have seen some neighborhood meetings and discussions about what we're gonna do. Here's our plan, here's our pictures, here's our setbacks, things like that. Those discussions are extremely helpful. But I'm just afraid if we, I don't wanna see it pulled out too long, I guess, is what I'm saying. Not to say that we can't give it more time, but not months.
I get it, and I, I know what you're saying there, but I don't know. It's a tough one. I've never gone the non-capitalist direction on a single thing like this, so.
But I don't wanna be insensitive to you, but, you know, I think what I voted on tonight, mainly because I'm not clear what questions you're gonna ask. And, and you'll go out in the neighborhood and, and I am sure that many people in the neighborhood will be against it. I'm sure some people will be for it, but I'm not sure what that will get you. Although, if you really, if you really wanna delay it to the next meeting, then I'd be in favor of that. But my thought is, we need to give the developer and the, the neighbors what our recommendation's gonna be. Maybe after this meeting between the city council meeting, maybe the developer and the neighbors get together and have some meetings and, and then discuss it and, and, and maybe it reaches a different decision at the city council. But I, I personally, I'm an operative. I work for, I work for Oklahoma State University, I work for government. And government moves slow enough.
Yeah.
And I wanna get going on this thing one way or the other, so that the developer knows. So with that, I'll make a motion so we can see if we can get a second and vote on it. My motion is to find the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend the city council deny the MAP amendment.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to deny the MAP amendment. Further discussion? So the motion is to deny, just so everyone's clear. Can we vote electronically?
If you're ready, sir. You ready? Somebody need get?
Becky. Okay, that motion, motion to deny passes three to two. No, I'm sorry, three to three.
No, it's tied, three to three.
I'm sorry.
Your motion, motion does not pass.
Correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman.
No, no, you're fine. I couldn't count for a minute, Mike.
I was looking up there, I'm going, the developer's gonna be upset with you.
I'm still used to five members, I guess. So the motion didn't pass. Do we have another motion?
To vote the exact same, but I accept staff findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Discussion, yes, sir.
Before we vote, maybe three, three again. I think it's very important the developer get with the neighbors in the area. My really only concern is the setback. All the other concerns in the neighborhood, I am convinced, will be addressed properly through the city channels in terms of traffic and, and all those things. So, so I still have the concern, and I'm gonna think about it for a moment, which way I wanna vote. I have a question. I don't know, this may be a question for staff. Or can we recommend a different zoning category to where they would have to maybe get a use permit or something? Or they would have to have, they could still build the apartments that they wanna build, but they might have to work with the neighborhood on a, on a setback or something like that, to where it wasn't just automatically here, you can build up to five feet within the property line or 11 feet or whatever it was. Is there, can we recommend something like that or no?
No, I don't think we can, can we, Dennis? We're looking at this MAP amendment only.
And that's it?
And it has to be, unfortunately, that's blanket for us. You have something to add?
Paula Dennison, Development Services. Actually, you can make a recommendation of a lesser zoning district than what has been advertised. The issue with this one, since they're asking for RTM, that is the least intense multifamily district. So the only lesser district available would be RSS, which is the small-lot, single-family apartments. Multifamily is not permitted in that zoning district. So technically, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. Theoretically, if they had asked for CG and this body wanted to recommend RTM, that is considered a lesser zoning district, and that could be your recommendation.
Thank you, Paula.
Yes, sir.
Dusty, I have a question in what, what happens here?
Well, I, I'll be honest. I'm gonna have to defer to, to Dennis McGrath on, on what happens on the stalemate in this, in this case. You wanna come up and explain? That it's just tied.
Well, that's a weasel's way, huh?
Never ran across that one before, Joe.
I apologize.
Nope, it's a great question. It was gonna be my question if the vote came up the same again. But currently, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Since it's been five minutes, what was that motion?
Step, staff's findings recommend city council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
So a yes vote would be to approve in this scenario.
Okay.
Further discussion?
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry. Trey made the motion, I saw. Okay, please place your votes. Yep. Let's see if I can count it.
Again, it's tied.
Again, it is tied. So I guess therefore, that will be our recommendation to the city council. Thank you. Moving on to miscellaneous items from staff for discussion and possible action. Our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for February 5th, 2013. And with that, let entertain a motion for adjournment.
Let's all move.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn. Please place your votes. There we go.
We all agree.
We already are. We agreed on something.
What's the next step go?